Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session. Pursue it to adjournment. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Mr. Joe Ray, who has been a friend of mine in the past. And he is President of SOS for the Students. If you do not know what this organization is, please Google it. It is excellent. It's about time that is devoted outside the classroom to devotional studies, which is a Supreme Court decision and a state law that students can do this during the school day under certain circumstances. Joe, if you would come forward and lead us in the devotional.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. You know, Psalm 118:24 says, "This is the day the Lord has made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it." And I believe it's more than just today. This is the hour. This is the week. This is the year. During our lifetime, we have the opportunity to let God move through us and build a nation, build a county in righteousness, to preserve our students, to preserve our lives. Psalm 127, verse 1 and 2, says, "Except the Lord build the city, the builder builds in vain; except the Lord watch over the city, the watchman wakes but in vain." And so, we need His help. I think, I don't know, you know, we're all in our relationship with God, but we need His help. And we look at our country today. We look at what's going on around us. We need His help. And so, let's pray. Father, we thank you that your word is our lamp and our light. We thank you that you've told us that you will go before us and you will make all the crooked places straight, and you will cut in pieces the gates of brass, and you will cut us under the bars of iron if we will just call upon you. You said, "If we lack wisdom, all we have to do is ask of you, and you'll give it to us." So, Father, tonight, we just submit this meeting to you. I thank you for our council members. I thank you, Father, that you're watching over them to protect them as they do the work to lead this county, to lead our people. And so, Father, I thank you that your word says in Psalm 34:7, "That the angel of God encamps around about those who fear you, and each of them he will deliver." So, thank you for watching over them and their families. Thank you for watching over the people here and over the people, the residents of our county, the residents of our state, and this country, Father. We thank you that the name of the Lord is a strong tower, that we can run to you and that we are safe. So, Father, in regards to this meeting, thank you for giving them the wisdom to make the decisions that need to be made. Thank you for giving them, Father, the courage to do the right thing for your glory and your honor and for the people, in Jesus' name. Amen.
You'd remain standing. The clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Each Commissioner record your presence.
We have 22 present tonight. I did receive a communication from Commissioner Becker, who is not feeling well this evening, and from Commissioner Sullivan likewise. So, we wish them a speedy recovery from their illness, and that leaves us 22. Now, 13 will still be the majority for votes tonight and 16 for two-thirds vote. Before we go to the approval of the agenda, we need to pull from this 2308-04 under Legislative Committee, and that will be referred back for consideration to the Legislative Committee. And when it comes to Report of the Chair, there's a lot of liberty in that. And I will tell you, we'll talk about what we want to do in September, if you want to keep that date. If you want to move it, doesn't matter to me. I'll be here, and we can just do it whenever we want to. But Labor Day does mess up our schedule in September a little. So, we'll do whatever your desire is on that. Have a motion to approve the agenda. Motion. You have what? Okay. I'm sure that's okay with the motion maker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, 2308-08, this is item number one under Budget. We didn't actually appropriate or approve this in the Budget Committee. I am fine with keeping this on here, but in keeping with our rules, I actually think we should probably take a vote to keep this on here. Otherwise, we would need to send that back to Budget, because we didn't, we didn't actually.
All right. Let's just do that. We don't have to be all so formal on that. But could I, you've made a motion to, then a second by Commissioner Ring, was it? And any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. So, that, we'll make that official. I think Commissioner Ring made the motion to approve the agenda. And who seconded that? Commissioner Mansfield. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Harrison, second by, I heard a voice. All right. Commissioner Klein. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Approval of the minutes for July the 17th?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Teichner. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Recognition of the public. Would you see if we have anyone? Okay. Where is Mr. Baker? Are you sure you don't want to speak? Okay. Okay. All right. We're on a roll here tonight. All right. Report of the Chair. What is the desire?
Excuse me, Chairman. I would like to make a sign up. I appreciate the question.
Sure. I think that will be all right with everyone. It is with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Pascal Jovens, 1335 Long Island Pike. Good evening, all. First, I want to tell you, probably people don't tell you, you know, but we appreciate the job that you guys are doing. Whatever you do, it's great. We can see, actually, discussion now in this committee, and we all appreciate that. And as I think, I think we need a little more transparency on what we're doing. And we are plus or minus, or at fault, on the airport board. And today, I was going on the Sumner County website to pick up the agenda, and the agenda was not there. And I started to look around, and we have a bunch of boards where the agenda is not posted, the minutes are not there. And, you know, I think we should be a little more, more serious about that. And like I say, you know, I realize that for the airport board tonight, so I'm going to make sure that's going to be sent. I think, I don't know how to do that, but somebody from the county should be sending the way to do that to all the boards, to the secretary on the board, or so we know where, where to send our agenda, our minutes, so everybody can access it. And the second thing, and I really don't know how to do that, how to expand the date. Because if I take my case today, I came at 5:00 to look at the Resource Authority Board. So, I was there. I had to run, because I'm on the airport board, was at 6:00. And I just finished the airport board to come back here at 7:00. So, a lot of people want to access, again, with city meetings. We have boards at the same time that city meeting, Hendersonville, Galton. So, if you really want to be involved in what's happening in your community, it's really, really hard. So, and again, I don't know how to do that, but I think that should be something we should look into. Again, thanks for all what you're doing, guys, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We need to decide if we want to move committees or move the date of the meeting for September. And I'm open for any suggestions at this time. Without a suggestion, then committees will just have to make arrangements. Okay. Commissioner Mansfield.
I guess, is it possible for the committees to move it to the Tuesday, the day after Labor Day? Or, just as a suggestion, but that'd be up to the committee chairman.
Tuesday after Labor Day?
For the first, the slate of first committees at education.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any discussion of that? Okay.
Many of you are affected by it. Well, you are. There is a huge decision that's going to be made on Tuesday night of the 5th in Gallatin on the annexation of the Green Farm, the rural character changing suburban, the plan of services for the area out on Lock 4 and all that. I will need to be there, because I will, I am affected by it, and I am also, all my constituents are affected by it. So, many of you know that that huge plan is going to affect the county in a large way. So, I would ask that you don't do that, because I can't be here. It starts at, the meeting is at 6:00. The council meeting, the Gallatin Council meeting. That's the, that is a big deal. So, I just ask that you would consider that.
All right. You've heard this Commissioner's concern. Anyone over here? Commissioner Schmidt.
I would like to make a motion, just after listening to Commissioner Junong, to move those committee meetings either that Wednesday following Labor Day or Thursday, not only for that reason, but I understand there's some that may not be able to make it. Maybe they took an extended weekend or something. You know, they had previous plans that may be into fact. So, despite, you know, especially what Commissioner Junong said, I'd like to move it to Wednesday or Thursday.
With that concern, the maker may be okay with Thursday. Are you? And the second?
Whatever, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, Thursday. Any concerns with Thursday? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. So, remember now, the committees have been moved to that particular date for that Labor Day. We have at this time the appointment of a new chairman and vice chairman, and the nominations will be open now for chair. Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that last year, you had said you'd only consider a year, but I approached you and asked if you would consider another year to run for chairman. So, I would like to nominate Commissioner Merrill Hyde for chairman for this next year.
Okay. The, there were several seconds, but Chris, the Commissioner Miller, I'm sorry, will take that as a second. Any other nominations? Commissioner Teichner?
Yes, I, is this for chairman?
Yes.
Only? I second you.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Well, let's put it, pardon me, let's put it on the board. Put that on the board. You may want to vote no, and most likely, there'll be a big bunch to vote no, but that's okay, too. We'll still be friends.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
So, is it green and red? Okay. Okay. Folks, I have to say, I must have done a poor job this last year to get a unanimous vote again. So. I'm going to make a motion for vice chair if the chair will take the stand a moment. I, I would like to nominate somebody that's become a friend, and he, maybe he crosses you the wrong way occasionally. I don't know. But he is probably one of the most knowledgeable people, smartest people, organized people that I know, and I think he'll go a long way in county government. And I'd like to nominate Commissioner Mansfield.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any other nominations for vice chair? Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Jerry Becker.
Jerry Becker, okay. Jerry Becker and anyone else? Pardon? No. We're not going to be that formal. Okay. All right. Second. All right. Mr. Mansfield will be green. Mr. Becker will be red. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right. The vote ends. Pardon?
I voted green.
Okay. And there are no abstentions here. Some, someone, is someone else just choosing not? Well, I pushed them, man. My button is not working. But I voted green, so, okay. All right. We have a new vice chair of the commission. Okay. We have now the Veteran Service Report that is a part of your packet, Certificates of Recognition. There is a Mental Health Proclamation by Commissioner Ring. Mr. Mayor, if you want to come forward. Pardon, I interrupted you.
Oh, I'm sorry. People from the Mental Health Committee can come up.
Okay.
Beginning in 2008, September has nationally been declared National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. The Sumner County Health Committee is striving to educate the Sumner County community by recognizing September as Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Awareness Month, with awareness campaigns, events, and activities planned throughout the month. Mental health issues and suicide are indeed a serious public health concern with far-reaching effects on individuals, families, and communities. Sumner County Health Committee members are raising community awareness with teal and purple ribbons available to the public in support of the campaign. Throughout the month of September, community partners are hosting events, seminars, and classes to help educate and assist individuals in meeting the needs of our community. Now, let me read the proclamation. Whereas half the U.S. population will experience some type of mental health challenge over the course of a lifetime, and whereas, mental health challenges are one of the most common health conditions affecting one out of six adults and impacting both the person experiencing mental health challenges and those persons who care and love the person facing the challenge. And whereas, Sumner County ranks number 20 in Tennessee for suicidal thoughts. And whereas, every day, millions of people face a stigma related to mental health and may feel isolated and alone going years before receiving any help. And whereas, 16% of adult Sumner County residents report experiencing poor mental health for 14 or more of the last 30 days. And whereas, creating a community where everyone feels comfortable reaching out for the support they deserve is crucial to ending the stigma around mental health and suicide. And whereas, recovery can and does happen, and all should know that support and help is available regardless of any individual's situation. And whereas, access to support and ending the stigma is of paramount importance. Therefore, the Sumner County Commission wishes to enhance public awareness of suicide and mental health now. And therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Commission on this 21st day of August, 2023, that September is Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Awareness Month to enhance public awareness of mental health and suicide prevention to help end the stigma. And I so move.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Ring and a second by Commissioner Teichner. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Phillips, and this is my colleague, Janet Parrish. We're with Volunteer Behavioral Health. We are one of the agencies that partners to come together to be a part of the Sumner County Health Committee. And so, as saying that, I also represent the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network. So, I encourage each person to get trained in how to recognize the signs and the symptoms of suicide. I also want to encourage people, if you have depression or any kind of other mental health symptoms, please seek help. Because what we know is 60%, sorry, 90% of people who have mental health needs seek help, and over 80% of those, if they receive help, have a relief in symptoms. So, we know if we can get people to go and get help, reduce the stigma, teach people how to look for signs for suicide, then we can make a big difference in our community. And you're a huge part of that. So, thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Before the meeting, Commissioner Pomeroy and I were talking about high school football programs. There are some great football programs in this county, but there are many other good things. And I know that each individual commissioner in here would say, "If I could improve something, this is what it would be." And there's always room for a lot of improvement. But beyond football, one of the things that, as a high school, middle school, and elementary principal in this county, that I observed to be very popular and educational and so beneficial was the 4H program. And I'm a big supporter of 4H. I think Commissioner Rogers, if you'd come forward at this time?
Clint, you guys want to come on up? Brown family?
All the 4H people, if you would come forward.
So, I've got Commissioner Holmes here with me. She's also on the committee, and we act in part with the 4H. And Commissioner Wright, Whitney Whitaker, Hattie Brown, sorry, Ann Adams, Jill Brown, Deanna Spicer, Steve Brown, and Director Clint Parker with the Sumner County 4H. So, I'm going to go just basically over what we have here. Pretty phenomenal what this group has done.
Any parents with cameras are welcome to come up to the rail if you'd like to take pictures.
Probably be better back there, or wider lens. Speaking for myself, that's all. So, this, this group here has taken the Nationals, Nationals in the 4H competition that was in Milford, Iowa. They go and study the conservation of biologists, researchers from the Iowa DNR, that's the Iowa Lakeside Laboratory, Clay County Conservation and Iowa Lakes Community College. The coaches and participants enjoyed hands-on learning experiences related to land and wildlife management techniques, including fish shocking, aquatic insect sampling, invasive species management, and radio telemetry. A 40-mile bus trip to the region also took the group ecological sites, including a fin, a number of remnant and reconstructed prairies, a kettlehole, wetland, and glacial lakes. On the third day, they participated in multiple hands-on events related to wildlife and habitat conservation. They also had to identify things were there, such as tall grass prairies, ecosystems for various wildlife species. So, having said that, in all of those competitions, Sumner County 4H represented Tennessee's 4H at this, and the team consisted of Abigail Barnett, which I don't believe that she's here. Oh, goodness, she's moved on. And Matty Rippey, Deanna Spicer, Abby Rippey. And the team placed second, with Deanna Spicer placing fourth highest individual, and Abigail Barnett placed fifth highest individual in the nation. So, there's those certificates for those, and we greatly appreciate it. And we'll just do one in the group and approve, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay?
We'll do that.
Good, good. Thank you. So, the Roundup is an event that happened since 1924. Tennessee 4Hers have gathered annually UT for the Roundup, obviously, 4H Roundup. This year, Sumner County 4H had five portfolio winners, three Vols State inductees, that's not the community college, it's the volunteer state inductees, a state community service award, and a family recognized for the contributions for the 4H program. That's what's the remainder of this. So, the portfolio competition is basically, it's not just basically, but it's a, it's a record of a 4Hers' work in a particular project area. 4Hers can enter their portfolio competitions. Outstanding portfolios within completed interview with professionals and specialists on the project for the chance for the overall project winner. As a state project winner, you can win scholarship money, trip to national congress, and in some project areas, college credit hours. We had six finalists and five winners this year in the Nationals. We had Ann Adams from Hendersonville, line and design, Abigail Barnett, outdoor recreation and shooting sports, Hattie Martinick. Martinick. Companion animal, Matty Rippey from Portland for swine, and Deanna Spicer from Gallatin for food science. And there's those there, Mr. Parker as well. And then, the Vols State Award, again, that's not the community college. That is the volunteer state award. It's given to recognize 4H members on a statewide basis who have particularly outstanding records in project achievement, leadership, and service in 4H as the highest honors in Tennessee that they may, 4Hers may receive. Sumner County had three inductees this year. Ann Adams from Hendersonville, Hattie Martinick from Hendersonville, and Deanna Spicer from Gallatin. There's those. And then, the county recognition. And then, the county recognition for the All-Star Group, the Sumner County 4H, this is pretty phenomenal, I thought. Sumner County 4H completed over 17,000 hours of public service work this year. Seventeen thousand. Absolutely. Now, this one's kind of crazy. This little young lad here. She was up here one time arguing over a red light. That's the first time she and I met unofficially. I thought, that girl's a firecracker. And then I was at a speech competition and met her there, and she was like, yeah, that's so cool, you're running for office. And I was like, yep, sure am. She said, well, I am too. Later. So, I kind of stayed in contact with her and watched her. Now, she's on her way to Harvard. So, yeah, pretty fascinating. But the Family Recognition Award, it's not all about Hadley, we're moving on past that. It's the, it's the Hail Master Family Award. The purpose of this Hail Master Family Award is presented to 4H families for their consistent leadership and exceptional involvement in the county, region, state levels, and 4H work. I will add, if I'm not mistaken, you just come back from Africa on a trip, so it's, it's global. This year, the Hail, Hail Master Family Award is presented to the Brown family from Gillettville. The family consists of Steven, Jill, Hannah, and Hadley Brown. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move to group and approve.
All right, motion and a second by Commissioner Pomeroy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Let's give them a round of applause.
Mr. Parker, you want to say anything? She's shy.
We really appreciate all that you all do to support the 4H program. Across the state of Tennessee, there's over 145,000 4Hers, and Sumner County has the largest classroom presence of any of the 95 counties, and it's truly thanks to our leaders here, and thanks to you all for, for allowing us to continue to allow that prosperity to happen. I've personally benefited from it from the age nine to today, and throughout the rest of my life, I'll know that Sumner County 4H is the reason that I'm able to speak and that I'm able to stand up for myself in any situation. The week after, Mr. Rogers mentioned that I will be attending Harvard here in about a week, I'll move to Boston, and the week after I received my acceptance, I got an email from the university saying that the reason they want me to be a part of the Harvard class of 2027 is because of my leadership portfolio developed in the 4H program. So, it doesn't stop here. The best part about my story is that it's not unique whatsoever. There are 145,000 students across the state that will tell you they've had a similar experience, and there are unlimited students that are continuing through the program right now that can one day stand up and tell you the exact same thing. So, thank you so much, and thank you to all of Sumner County 4H for investing in me and so many others, and thank you to you all.
Thank you. Written reports of county officials are included in your packet, and I would advise you to refer to those, that's for your information. At this time, we have a election of notaries, and do I have a motion, Commissioner Pomeroy, and a second by Commissioner Harris, and that will be on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Commissioner Janong, is your? It's mine? Commissioner Boyt, okay. Yes? Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor, we may need to have IT check this out next week. I don't know what's happening with it. Report of standing committees, Health and Emergency Services.
No reports, Chairman.
All right. Education Committee.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
General Operations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I normally don't have a report, but I was coerced. I mean, I was encouraged to give us an update on what's happening downtown Gallatin regarding the courthouse. Substantial completion is, is expected to be on September 18th, so less than a month from now, we will have people moving into that building if nothing else changes, and we should be operating out of there in early January. The other part of that project is the parking structure, which I've been following a lot closer, is they, there was three feet of land or earth that was pulled out and shotrock was put back in, and they're doing foundations right now, they're boring caissons and going through a lot of rock to get to bedrock. Precast components will be showing up in early October. There, there was a, a movement of two sewer lines to the side roads, and that has, has been accomplished. Franklin Road, for anybody who uses that frequently like I do, 50% of the time, it will be closed, and that includes the Christian Towers people. They, they have been shuttling to, back and forth to the hospital parking structure as a place for them to park. There will be lines going underground starting in September, so there'll be a lot of chopping up of asphalt on the two side streets that come off of East Main. And then finally, the plan is to have that parking structure done and operable in late April. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Highway Committee.
No report, Mr. Chairman, except for, I was just going to say there's been a lot of improvements on the road, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Toby Ellis and the crew, because they've done fantastic job. I mean, there's stripes on roads that didn't have stripes before, and, and that's a big deal about the safety, because when I was driving over here, I saw there was a car accident, and, you know, it, it really is, some of these backroads are so small, it just really is appreciated by, a lot of the citizens have told me how much they appreciate what he's doing, and I just wanted to share that with them.
Thank you for those comments. Committee on Committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one, Tourism Board, Kathleen Boslett, citizen, to replace Tammy Wallace for two-year term, and Mary Janong, Commissioner, to replace Don Schmidt. I so move.
A motion and a second by Commissioner Sho. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. Ms. Janong. All right.
Item number two, 2023, 24 Standing Committee Slate. I so move.
And let me say before this, that if you have any suggestions on changes, changes, what I'm asking you to do, unless there's a division of the House, and I'm, I'm overruled, I'm asking you to put in writing so that these Committee on Committees can review each one of these, and you're welcome to attend the committee meetings, and it'll be a lot more personal and up close than, than tonight. But if I'm overruled, we will deal with it right here, but I am requesting that those, any changes be placed in writing and given to the Chairman tonight. Okay. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. Go right ahead.
Thank you. This is, I'm speaking towards the Committee on Committee report. I will be voting no on this because I believe that it's unfair to the people of District 15 that their Commissioner Wes Win is not on any committees. He represents a district just like everybody else in this commission does, and by keeping him off committees, what it's doing is it is keeping his residents from being fully represented on this commission. So, I, I will be voting no on the committees because of that. Thank you.
Okay. And I appreciate those comments. I will say, not that this means anything other than just a lot of words to you, but the commission, I would love to say, is not a political animal, but the county commission, just like city councils and every other body, they are political animals, and there are reasons, and there are not reasons, to do certain things. In this case, there may be other reasons, but I, I cannot imagine them never appointing me to a committee. But there was one year in my 30 years up here that I received a committee slate, and I looked on the front, and in that time, we had more committees, there was a front and a back, and I thought, well, I didn't get any committees on the front, and I flipped it over, and I didn't get any committees on the back. I didn't get any committees, I didn't understand that. That occasionally happens. I went on, did my thing. The next year, I actually think I got the beer board the next year. So, in, in any event, those things happen, but let me call for a vote on this unless there's someone else, Commissioner Win.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Commissioner Ring's comments and appreciate what you just shared as well, Chairman Hyde, as far as not being selected to be on, on a committee. You know, I, I went back and, and I watched the committee videos every month. The meetings I don't attend, I do watch on video. I, I didn't hear any discussion at the Committee on Committees for the whole minute and 30 seconds that this was in front of the committee. You know, there was a, a comment was made that the chairman of the committee assembled a slate of who was going to serve on what committees, and that every commissioner that had submitted a request got one of their choices, but that's not accurate. So, we all received a notice from our county clerk indicating that we needed to submit our committee preferences by July 31st. I submitted mine on July 26th, so well advanced of the deadline, but somehow I didn't manage to get on any committee. So, the Chairman also stated that he made decisions based on his observations of commissioners' comments. And so, I, I just want to say on the record, I think it's a shame that one individual is being allowed to silence voters of an entire district, their needs, their concerns, their desires for representation, and the remaining members on this committee also just sit idly by and allow it to happen without uttering a single word. So, I guess all the expressed outrage of yesteryear from what's happened to people in the past, I guess that's all for show. But that's politics, as you were saying, Mr. Hyde, and I'll take my medicine. If that's the will of this body, so be it. Put yourselves in my shoes and my voter's shoes. What would you do? What would you expect? Is this how you want to be treated? So, since the Chairman's reasoning for his recommendations, his recommended changes were not discussed in the public eye, I would like the public to hear the reasoning for each committee reassignment. So, I'd like to start with Commissioner Miller's committee assignment or reassignment. Commissioner Miller, by my, what I could tell, would now sit on what I believe is six different committees or commissions for the county. So, it appears she's replacing either Commissioner Harrison or Commissioner Becker on the Finance Committee, so I'd just like to hear what the rationale was for this move, and just, how, is she more qualified than these two individuals? If so, how? But I'd just love to hear the, the rationale for this.
And that, that would be shared if you ask and put it in writing, go to the committee meeting, unless this body overrules me, I don't think I want to do that on the floor here tonight. But if you want an answer to that, you may very well write that and make sure that I get it tonight, and I will forward that to the committee.
So, Chairman, if I understand you correctly, it, it doesn't matter if someone makes a motion today from the floor, we're just going to not take it up, this slate is what it is, and it's up or down? Is that accurate?
If you have a specific nomination, if you want to nominate yourself for one of the committees, go ahead and do it.
Okay. I, I'd like to make a motion and nominate myself for the General Ops Committee, that was one committee that was on my list of committees in replacement of Commissioner Miller.
All right. Motion's been made, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Harrison. All right, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And I'd say, I think the no's have it unless someone requests a division of the House.
Division.
All right. Please place it on the board. Pardon? Yes. If, if that's what the clerk wants it to be. Green is yes for the motion, red is no.
Each commissioner records your vote.
And the vote is 14 to 8. No. That still would not preclude you from addressing the committee if you like, if you'll see me before the night's over. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign?
No, no.
Is anyone requesting a vote on the board? All right. Madam Clerk, place that on the board. Yes is the committees as suggested by the Committee on Committees, red is no to that slate.
Each commissioner records your vote.
And that vote is 15 to 7, so the slate is adopted. The, is that all of your report, Mr. Chairman? Okay, legislative.
Resolution 2308-06, authorizing county mayor to solicit bids for roof repair and replacement at the, oh, excuse me, 2308-05, my apologies, Mr. Chairman, appointing and reappointing the judicial magistrates of Sumner County, and I so move.
Motion and a second, and I see no one in the queue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
2308-06 is authorizing county mayor to solicit bids for roof repair and replacement at the Sumner County Jail, and I so move.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and that passes unanimously. All right.
Resolution 2308-07 is to approve statement of intent to move forward for purposes of allowing due diligence and reviewing feasibility of a solar lease agreement for the jail roof, and I so move.
So, motion and a second by Commissioner Klein. Any discussion? I, I, no, I'm not going to speak to that. Okay, there's no one in the queue, but I'm going to ask that this be placed on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
Well, it's going nowhere tonight. 11 to 11. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Chairman. Was there anything else, Mr. Chairman?
That's it, that's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Budget Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So twenty-three oh eight dash oh eight, this is appropriating two-hundred-twenty-six-thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars for a BCIF grant.
Motion by Commissioner Pomeroy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rogers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Appropriated twenty-three oh eight dash oh nine, careover funds, forty-four thousand six-hundred-and-fifty from FY twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, capital projects. I so move.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Pomeroy, second by Commissioner, did you have your Rogers? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
I, I think the ayes have it unless someone requests a vote on the board. Division of the House, okay. The ayes have it, go ahead.
Twenty-three oh eight dash ten, appropriating one-point-four million dollars from FY twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four for a jail roof project, and I thoroughly, thoroughly so move.
All right, motion by Commissioner Sho, second by Commissioner Harrison. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Twenty-three oh eight dash eleven, appropriating one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, carryover from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four for IT disaster recovery. I so move.
Aye.
Motion by Commissioner Sho, second by Commissioner Harris. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Twenty-three oh eight dash twelve, approving adding a line item to receive up to thirty-thousand dollars of private corporate donations for Christmas decoration and administrative building. Quick note, this is purely private donations, we're just adding a line item here, not appropriating new funds. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Sho, second by Commissioner Ring. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Twenty-three oh eight dash thirteen, appropriating carryover one-hundred-and-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars from twenty-two, twenty-three, Sheriff's Office Mental Health Transport Grant to FY twenty-three, twenty-four. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Sho, second by Commissioner Pomeroy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Appropriating one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred dollars for SRO expenditures, capital projects, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Sho, second by Commissioner Wynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Twenty-three oh eight dash fifteen, appropriating thirty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars from Drug Control Fund to be used for twenty-five tasers for the Sheriff's Office, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Sho, second by Commissioner Lambert. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. I am sure glad that we can come together and go through expenditures so very quick as part of the meeting.
Twenty-three. Twenty-three oh eight dash sixteen, appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars to the Drug Task Force within the Sheriff's Budget for various expenditures, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Sho, second, someone?
Lots of seconds.
Commissioner Wright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Twenty-three oh eight dash seventeen, appropriating one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty dollars of a Homeland Security Grant for EMA for various items to purchase. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Sho, second by Commissioner Schmidt. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Financial Management?
Oh, we got one more, Mr. Chairman. Twenty-three oh eight dash eighteen, approving a sixty-month agreement for body cameras for the Sheriff's Office, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Sho, second by Commissioner Mansfield. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. End of report.
All right. You are adjourned.